Call this meeting of the Salem Housing Authority for February 10 to order. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Commissioner Tesler?
Present.
Commissioner Nanki?
Here.
Commissioner Claussen?
Here.
Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Benars?
Here.
Commissioner Clem?
Here.
Commissioner Hein? Absent. Chair Bennett?
Here. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No one has signed up for public comment. Is there anyone that wanted to speak? Commissioner Nanki, the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move the consent calendar.
Second.
Second by Benars. Any discussion? Mr. Welch, anything you want to highlight here?
I think the -- thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I would point out would be on the business profile and the program management report. We do have some new information on HUD funding. We don't know exactly what it means, but across the board, the primary programs that HUD funds for the housing authority are increased this year, and that's a positive step. We'll see what actual numbers come out to us here in the next 30 days or so.
Well, good. It's good news. Any questions? Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. We have no other business. The housing authority is adjourned.
I'll call to order this evening's meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency Board for the City of Salem for February 10, 2014. Would the recorder please call a roll? Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Tesler?
Present.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member Claussen?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Thomas?
Here.
Board Member Benars?
Here.
Board Member Clem?
Here.
And Chair Peterson.
Did you call my name?
Yes.
I apologize. Present. Thank you. It's all right. We have to get things in order up here. All right. I see that we have no reports of boards, commissions, or committees that I'm aware of. And our third item is public comment. We have one person who did sign up, Scott Bassett. Mr. Bassett, did you want to address an item on the -- on this? You want it on the city council, don't you? Okay, 3.212. Thanks. We'll call on you then. Good. All right. Was there anyone else in the chambers who did want to make public comment on any agenda item other than public hearings for the agency? All right. We'll move to the consent calendar. Member Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Thomas to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Direct your attention to the information reports that are in our binders and ask for special orders. And there are no special orders of business or unfinished business or public hearings and no new business for the Urban Renewal Agency, so this meeting is adjourned. I will now call to order this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council for February 10, 2014. Would the recorder please call a roll?
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tesler?
Present.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor Claussen?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Thomas?
Here.
Counselor Benars?
Here.
Counselor Clem?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Thank you very much. And now, we have approval of additions or deletions. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion for this?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move additions, deletions, and revisions to the council agenda.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to approve the additions and deletions to the agenda. Is there any discussion?
Madam--
Counselor Benars?
Thank you. I had read the previous version, and I didn't see much of a difference.
The difference is one bill was removed from our vote tonight on legislative positions. It was Senate Bill 1531 regarding operation of medical marijuana facilities. We have a work session following this council meeting on that issue.
Okay. Thank you.
I forget that not everyone has this on their -- do you have this on your desk?
No. Well, I may not have it here, but I did see it this afternoon.
Okay.
And I was looking at one -- well, through the computer, they're hard to read.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Under council and city manager comment, I want to invite first our city manager to make comment. I think she has quite a report for us this evening.
Well, I do. Thank you very much, Mayor. And counselors have a little longer report on your desk, but I wanted to commend all of our city crews for their excellent work they've done since, actually, they started on Tuesday, the Public Works Crews, with Tuesday and Wednesday with putting down de-icer. But our Public Works Crews, police, fire, fleet services, who kept our equipment up and rolling and chained and repaired as it needed to be repaired, and then our own facility staff who did a lot of work on the grounds over the weekend. We had 10 to 18 inches of snow in Salem, which was an amazing amount of snow for us to have with the limited snow removal equipment that we have within the city, because that doesn't happen very often. They laid down about 1,500 tons of sandy rock, which as soon as the snow's gone, we've got to go around and pick it all up again, and that takes quite a bit of time. And 4,000 gallons of de-icer was applied to keep people safe. As the storm continued, most streets had to have two or three passes before they were able to pick up all of the snow. I think counselors know and want the public to know that when we have events like this, that we deal first with arterial and collector streets. Handle emergencies as they happen, like some people sliding and slipping into each other on the bridge. We actually had to close the Marion Street Bridge for about 45 minutes to get cars off, sand it, so the other people could move across safely. Our crews, in addition to working 24 hours a day, you know, on 12-hour shifts, 12 hours on and 12 hours off, through this entire time period, our managers, Mark Bechtel and Bruce Hildebrand and other people, are also preparing for the next wave, which is likely to be some flooding due to the heavy rainfall we're supposed to get this week and then the snow melt that we'll have. So in addition to working on the issue that they were working on at that time, we've also opened 15 sandbag stations today, so that we'll be prepared if anyway, if we do have any flooding in any of our low-lying areas around the creeks, we'll be watching the river closely. We very much appreciated the public adhering to our request that they not drive on the streets after Friday evening unless they had chains or traction devices. That helped tremendously on reducing the number of accidents that we had and also helped our Public Works Crews take care of the streets without as much traffic on it. So really do appreciate everyone for their cooperation in that. So, and I wanted to -- the Mark Bechtels in the back of the room, but we especially thank him and his crew for all the work that they did.
That's great.
Yeah, I'd like to actually add my second very strong thank you to the Public Works Department, and certainly, I was able to enjoy Busch Park and Riverfront Park the most because I can walk there from my home. And it was really a pleasure to see how families and individuals were out enjoying the parks. And sledding at Busch Park is a very big sport, whether you do it on a cafeteria tray or a box or a high-tech sled. So it was fun to see how our parks are so used and very, very complimentary to the parks' staff because they still kept the parks, you know, open and available to the public. And it really was a wonderful thing to see people out there being healthy in the snow and not all cooped up. I wanted to also commend Roger Stevenson, who's here, and the CERT teams, this city, the -- through the Red Cross and through United Way and many of the sheltering organizations and social service organizations, this time, had put together a warming station, a warming location, for people without homes, and it was held at the First Congregational Church and so much, many thanks to them. They, as a congregation or as a governing body of their congregation, were asked on Monday and agreed on Tuesday to become the first real warming station, and that opened the next day. So they did a pretty remarkable job of being ready for everybody. And so my hat goes off to Roger and all of the CERT members who were the first row of volunteers, first team that went in, and thanks to all the other volunteers that helped in that regard as well. Other comments from counselors? Counselor Benars?
I too want to add my voice to the appreciation for the city, for the city workers that spent their time, not with their families, but out helping the rest of our community. I was hoping to get an answer because I kept quoting this to people. I think just a few years ago, we only had two sanding trucks, and now we have six or so, and I hope maybe you can--
Yes. Mark Bechtel, let's come into the podium.
Yes, Counselor. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Counselors. Mark Bechtel, Parks and Transportation Services Manager. Yes, when Peter Fernandez turned over the division to me in 2003, we had three snow plows, and that was it. And now we have a little bit larger fleet. We have six heavy plows, one kind of small to medium plow, two trucks that can be set up just as sanders, and then we have two trucks that carry 500-gallon de-icer tanks. And we have our grader, which we have been using extensively as another blade. And that's what we run 24 hours a day till we get caught up with everything.
Again, I want to appreciate what you have done with the resources that you have. It has been an interesting year, and to go to say to that is that we don't have these near these kind of occurrences with 12 to 18 inches of snow. There's no reason to invest a lot of money into this equipment if we're not going to really have this on a yearly basis. But for what we have, a lot of these tools are dual-use. They're not only for removing snow, but also for doing roadwork and what have you around our community.
That's correct, Counselor. The plows and sanders are very job-specific, but every one of our trucks, our dump trucks are used every day for all the different maintenance purposes, and many of the -- much of the equipment we put in are on skids. That can be taken on and off, and trucks reconfigured. So every truck that we purchase is multi-tasked.
Thank you.
Counselor Bennett and then Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Same from my neighborhood as well over in Inglewood for the tremendous work you do. And also was contacted by Peter Courtney over at the State Capitol today through his office, commenting on just how well-done everything was around their institution as well. They were really pleased, I think, with the way things went. And then I wanted to do just a quick shout-out to a couple of folks in my neighborhood and also, I guess, for the city police department. The Neighborhood Watch Program is just a great program that we have in this community. And my wife, Sherri, and one of our neighbors, Doug Brown, took on the project of getting our neighborhood not only organized, but also signed, and have finally raised enough money to put up six signs over on East Kansas, Nebraska, and 16th in order to alert people they're coming into a Neighborhood Watch neighborhood. And it was just a real good neighborhood project. Real pleased with it, so wanted to thank them.
I think Counselor Nanki, did you have a comment you'd like to add?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. Definitely a big high-five to staff. And when I was contemplating the amount of snow that was laying in my backyard and on top of my roof, I wondered what the record was and how close we were. So I put my son through the task of internet searching, and lo and behold, he found a wonderful article provided by the Salem Public Library on Salem online history. "Yes, This is Salem," read the caption of the front-page photo in the Capital Journal on February 1, 1937. During an 18-hour stretch the previous day, City of Salem had received 27 inches of snow.
Wow.
All over the city, deep snow caused problems, hundreds of cars stranded on Salem streets, city buses were stuck, postmaster announced they would only deliver mail to those who shoveled their walks. Building marquees overburdened by snow came crashing down as the chains broke through Dreamland rink at the end of State Street fell with such force that shingles were hurled across the street. PGE responded to the prison annex cottage farm and tuberculosis hospital on skis to find the brakes in line, and a county grader operating clearing snow from streets was badly injured when he was struck by a train at 12th and Schmeckada, and the grader was a total lost. The Marion County Courthouse started on fire, and the Salem Fire Department was unable to get to the scene. Fortunately, the fire was extinguished by hand, but it took two hours to get the equipment back to the fire station. And then, since that was right after the Depression, all the men desiring work were urged by employment officials to secure shovels and create their own jobs. And then they took all the snow and dumped it into the Willamette River. So it was rather fascinating. So thank you, Salem Public Library, for making that available.
Wonderful report, yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay.
And then counselors, just to let you know, we have about one more night of operations, and we hope to be done. We're going to try to clean out the downtown a little bit better tonight and be done. Hopefully, school will open tomorrow.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Yes, and Mayor, I had one other announcement to make. I am very pleased to announce that Glenn Gross is our new Community Development Director.
Oh, congratulations. And Mr. Gross, how long have you worked with the City of Salem?
Just about 10 years now, ma'am.
10 years? All right. Well, we welcome you right up to that top position in your department. Thank you. And thank you also for the time that you spent as the interim. I know that always adds an extra layer of work because usually, we don't, we're not able to completely divest people of their previous, you know--
Yes, usually it's holding two or three jobs for a period of time.
So thank you for doing that as well. Great. I have one sort of a housekeeping thing to announce. Annually, City of Salem city counselors travel to Washington, DC during the annual National League of Cities Conference. It's a very helpful and educational experience for counselors, and so we do budget for that, and we hold that opportunity to be a very special one. I've had a chance to go in the past. I'm not able to go this year, but I've found it helpful personally and then helpful as well to the city. And in our budget this year, we have three individual, we have three positions funded for that trip, and we're doing, making that decision based on seniority. And the counselors who will be attending this year are counselors Nanki, Tesler, and Dickey. So we appreciate your willingness to travel on behalf of City of Salem and to attend. And I know that you'll bring back information that will help us all as a council and as a city to do our work going forward. So thank you to that. And I think there are no other messages from counselors, and so we're ready to move on to public comment. Do we have some public comment? And now we do. Scott Bassett. Mr. Bassett has signed up to talk about Agenda Item Number 3.2A. Welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name is Scott Bassett, and I live in Ward 4. And Mayor, I want to appreciate that you got me lined up on the correct agenda item.
There you go.
Thank you. I'm here to speak in support of Agenda Item 3.2A on the need to update the city's natural hazard mitigation plan. The highest priority for our scarpest transportation funds is to keep bridges open to emergency facilities like the Salem Hospital after natural disasters. The new audit by ODOT and FEMA is a wake-up call to city leadership. The City of Salem needs to refocus on the basics of public service, keep the roads open after snowstorms and other national, natural events like flooding and a major earthquake. The Salem Hospital is ringed with creeks that are crossed by 75-year-old bridges, and they are in poor condition, and the city has very limited funding for bridge maintenance, repairs, or replacement. Putting $7 million into planning for a 300 or a $400 million bypass of downtown comes into question when we can't even take care of all the bridges we have now. Last week, the Salem River Crossing Oversight Team approved the Salem Alternative Third Bridge, and unless it is stopped, planning will use up an additional $2 million of discretionary regional transportation dollars that could go into more urgent needs. Please take the updates to the Natural Hazards Plan as an opportunity to refocus on our greatest actual needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Bassett? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate your testimony. Let's see. Our next item is the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion for--
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on. We have no public hearings and no special orders of business this evening. I draw your attention to the information reports that are in your council packet. Were there any questions or comments on any of the information reports? Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of council, just want to underscore, well, I'm pleased that the city is participating in the employment retention of veterans project, new project, really focusing on if folks need help, get it where they were, involve the employer and veterans with PTSD and other issues. So this is a, Salem was sort of nominated because we've been out front in terms of helping veterans, but really, employees who are a member of the Garden Reserve. And so I think this is a great project. I'm glad to see that Connie's taking this on. I don't think it's a lot of additional staff work. What it's been explained to me is it isn't, and it will actually help guide federal legislation related to veterans employment. And I think it'll help City of Salem, too. Not a big thing, but it's one of those little things we do that has a big effect later on, so I just want to underscore my support for this.
Thank you very much. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to make a quick highlight on the 7A, which is the 2012-13 financial audit of the City of Salem. We have a clean audit in the nice newly-covered over the last couple of years, comprehensive annual financial report. I would encourage everyone to go out and find it, and if you read 15 pages, 15 through 30, in Management, Discussion, and Analysis, you will know the finances and how the City of Salem works. So pretty short read for mass comprehension. And they did a wonderful job. And they spoke highly of staff as well, so it's a good thing.
Excellent. I have a question, actually, along those lines, just procedural.
Sure.
Do we bring this, then, later to council for approval, or is this simply an information report only?
This is information report to council. It's really a summarization of, you know, you look at the five-year forecast and you look at every year's budget, and this is a report of how we did last year, what we spent money on, what our bonded indebtedness was, what the valuation of all the property in Salem is, how we did financially. We submit this report to the state every year, and then we give copies of it to city council. And it really is, I agree with Counselor Nanki, this is an important place to look at, to really understand the city's finances.
And I assume, then, this is also always provided to our bonding authorities and actual institutions?
Oh, yes. They look at this in great detail. We also have this online for members of the public, if you want to look at it.
Good. Great. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments on information reports? Seeing none, we have no ordinances on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone here for public comment who has signed up, perhaps? Wonderful. We have several people who've signed up, and this is for public comment other than items that are on the agenda. So we have several people, and we'll start with Anthony Johnson. And Mr. Johnson, yes, thank you. Come to the podium. You have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on, and then at the end of three minutes, it's a red light. So welcome.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. My name is Anthony Johnson. I am here tonight representing the Oregon Cannabis Industry Association, which consists of members across the state, including in Salem. And I'll be brief because I know that you have a work session following this meeting on medical marijuana dispensaries and facilities, but I come today to implore you to not, you know, make moves to pass a resolution or ordinance prohibiting medical marijuana facilities here in Salem. There's a hearing tomorrow, and there will be, you know, ongoing discussions as towards the best way to regulate medical marijuana facilities. I urge the, you know, the city council to wait and see how those go. Right now, I believe that passing an ordinance to prohibit medical marijuana facilities, first and foremost, will really hurt patients and also potentially end up costing the city money in litigation when, you know, common sense, time, place, and manner rules and regulations will suffice instead of prohibiting all medical marijuana facilities. I think there are some misconceptions about medical marijuana that have led to other localities passing prohibitions already. And first and foremost is that, you know, medical marijuana is a sham and that anybody can get a medical marijuana card in Oregon. And unfortunately, that is simply not the case. Other states have much more lax medical marijuana laws, but in Oregon, it's very stringent as towards the medical records that you need, the licensing you have to go through, the fee you have to pay. Other states like Washington and California, they don't really even have registries, and anybody can get a medical marijuana card. That's not the case here in Oregon. Next is that there's, you know, danger around medical marijuana facilities when statistics have shown in other states and here in Oregon that medical marijuana-- statistics have shown in other states and here in Oregon that medical marijuana has not caused crime and other dangers. Uh, there are fewer highway fatalities in medical marijuana states, fewer suicides. Uh, the workplace rate in accidents in Oregon is lower than it's ever been. And the crime around medical marijuana dispensaries is the same for pharmacies and they're actually safer than banks. So, I implore you to, you know, move slowly, see how it goes, and work for common sense rules and regulations, but not prohibit medical marijuana facilities outright. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there, are there questions? Excuse me. I would prefer that you not have any sort of demonstrative, um, outbursts at the end of testimony. Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Johnson? Counselor Tesler?
Thank you. I was wondering if you could possibly, um, provide a list of sites that you got your information from tonight? I'm, I'm especially interested in your statistical background on that.
Definitely.
You know, I'm sure you have it. I'm just asking you for those specific sites that would be interesting to look at.
Yeah. Um, I will be happy to send the statistics to, you know, to everybody on the city council. Um, the, uh, one study was actually done by the Los Angeles Police Department in 2009, who actually sought out trying to find, uh, that medical marijuana dispensaries were causing increase in crime. And the LA police chief came back saying, you know, "We went out looking, looking for this information and we found out that it did not." Um, University of California's put out statistics, their statistic is out of Denver, and the, and I'll be happy to share this with.
That would be great. Thank you.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. Um, you mentioned, and I thought interestingly, you know, sort of a common sense slowdown. Do you have any model regulations, uh, whether it be zoning or any other kind of regulations that you have found in, either in Oregon or in other states you think represent that kind of common sense regulatory environment for this?
Uh, yeah, definitely. We've been working on compromise, uh, ordinances and legislation on this regard. And it's basically around, along the lines of regulating as towards where, where they can be located. And part of that's taken care of by state law where you can't be within a thousand feet of a school and you have to be in properly zoned areas. Um, but there are also additional rules or regulations that could be, uh, implemented around, uh, advertising, um, as well as, um, I like hours of operations if it gets, you know, unruly in certain areas that places can be open twenty-four, seven. But, uh, yeah, I've been, and, and those regulations that have worked in other localities and that I think have worked for Oregon, I'd be happy to share with the city council as well.
I, I think that would be helpful if you could email those to us. We're looking at this. Obviously, we have a work session tonight on it. There are additional meetings going on, plus you mentioned the state is looking at its own change in the regulatory environment. And I think it'd be helpful to understand, uh, if and where it's, it's worked before.
Definitely. I'll be happy to share that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Johnson? Thank you. All right. Our next person on the list is Chris Os, followed by Jacob, um, Jacob Pacey Kraus,
Thank you for the opportunity for us to speak, Mayor.
And if you'll identify yourself and give your address or your ward, please.
Um, my name's Christopher Os and thirty-seven ninety-five Corazon Creek Road, Salem, Oregon. I just want to start with, uh, first of all, just a simple poll. Oregon Live did a poll and it said that seventy-two point seven-three percent of people say no that local governments should not be able to restrict medical marijuana retail establishments. Twenty-six percent point nine said yes, they should, and one percent had no opinion. Um, Representative Buckley, who started this bill, he was the chief sponsor of it, said the GMO bill would actually apply to medical marijuana distribution, which prohibits local governments from regulating. Um, that was a bill introduced earlier this year. Um, Monsanto's was a big one behind it. Just off the top of my head, at the Marion County, uh, meeting the other day, I guesstimated seventy-five to a hundred jobs after talking to all the people that own places and plan on, uh, opening places. I'd say that figure would actually be more accurate, about a hundred to a hundred and fifty jobs lost if you banned dispensaries in Marion County. In just, uh, the last twenty-four hours, we've had a hundred and six signatures at change.org to stop local governments to, from banning. Fifty percent of people polled at, uh, the Oregonians said that they'd vote for legalization of marijuana, which also there's the Senate Bill fifteen fifty-six, has eight cosponsors in both changer, in both chambers, and it's to fully legalize marijuana and put it on the ballot for, uh, November. Also, another way to generate revenue for y'all, um, instead of banning it, would be to charge us a simple, you know, uh, fee for opening, for a permit, you know, a hundred to five hundred dollars, you know, somewhere in there would be reasonable that, you know, you can make it economical for you, that you could have an oversight committee, you know, to govern your own self, you know, govern us through your own self instead of the state. And, uh, just a simple fact, over, last year, over a hundred thousand people died from FDA-approved prescriptions. Since the beginning of history, there's not been one person who's ever died from medical marijuana. If you watch CNN, they have a lot of, you know, stories lately about different people moving from different states that have medical marijuana because it's helped save their children from seizures and all kinds of debilitating injuries. I just ask you to, you know, research it and really look into it before you think about it with an old-school mentality of the Reefer Madness era, that this is legitimate medicine and is prescribed by more than half, half the doctors that are approved by the government to, you know, operate. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr.? Am I saying your name correctly? Pacey Kraus?
Oh, no, I'm Christopher Os.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris. Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there, are there questions for Mr. Os? All right. Thank you very much. Now, we'll have Jacob Pacey Kraus. Am I saying this correctly, I hope?
Jacobi.
Jacobi. Thank you. Jacobi. And again, if you'll state your, uh, name and your address or your ward.
My name is Jacobi Pacey Kraus and I live at forty fifty-eight Liberty Road South here in Salem. My name is Jacobi Pacey Kraus. I'm twenty-three years old. I grew up in Lincoln City, Oregon, was raised by my parents, Kenneth and Teresa Kraus. Growing up as a child, I was very wary of what drugs can do to you and what they will do to your body, your family, and your lifestyle and the others around you. My father was a police officer for many years and for about six years of my life, he was the dare officer of Lincoln City. So, I was well-informed on what drugs were and to stay far away from them. I was a very athletic kid growing up. I was in every sport you could possibly imagine, with great talent, always striving to be better and always giving a hundred and ten percent academically and on the field. By high school, I had really focused my skills on football. It was my life. I ate, slept, drank, sweat, and cried football. I was first-team all-state defensive nose guard the first three years of high school football career. I really excelled. I had received two letters of intent from Oregon State University and Nebraska State. I couldn't believe my dreams of going to the NFL were getting one step closer. I was so happy. I went to celebrate and visit my biological father in Lebanon, Oregon, the night before my senior physical exam. And the next early morning, around four or five AM, I was picked up by my girlfriend with her best friend and my brother to take me home in time for my exam. I decided to sit in the backseat of the small Chevy Cavalier and my girlfriend sat right next to me in the middle so we could snuggle. She didn't have a chest belt, only a lap belt. We were going around a corner around fifty-five miles an hour when a brand-new Jeep Grand Cherokee came out of nowhere and was in our lane. It happened so fast, there was no reactions for both drivers, so we collided head-on. I had turned and put my arm to stop my girl from being hurt and when I did that, my top belt didn't engage, only my bottom lap belt did, so all my weight and force was up from the crash was caught through my pelvic area. It put me in a wheelchair for eight weeks and a cane for six months. They had put me through so many different painkillers like fifteen-milligram Percocets, cortisone shots, lidocaine shots, physical therapy, that, then the specialty physical therapy, and nothing seemed to take the extreme pain away. It didn't matter what position it was. My sciatic nerve in my neck hurt so bad, I would cry and not do anything for days on end. Sometimes when they would spasm really bad, I would even lose control of my legs and completely, I couldn't stand or walk. I couldn't even move. I was bedridden for days. Uh, side effect after side effect started appearing from all the pharmaceuticals I'd been taking. I was extremely mean. I lost my appetite. I had horrible headaches. I even had electric shocks that were going through my nerves when I would hit the ground. But basically, I, I got online, I started doing a bunch of research. I watched some documentaries on Netflix. I learned about cannabis and how it was a natural remedy to help you. I, from there on, I started doing my research. I went to Portland and a doctor prescribed it to me. He prescribed it to me for my back pain, my neck muscle spasms.
I have to draw your attention to, your time is up. Can you summarize?
Yes. At the end here, um, I'm Jacobi Pacey and cannabis has changed my life in more than one way. Please don't take away the right to my safe medicine and a greater quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Counselor Dickey?
Um, thanks for coming down and sharing your story. I know that probably wasn't an easy thing to have to share. Um, I'm just curious to know, um, is it, um, is the, the medical marijuana pretty accessible here in Salem or do you have to go to some lengths to get it or do you have to go out of town?
Um, as of right now, um, it's still very, very hard to get a hold of. I mean, you can, there's like a couple places in town that I see, but I mean, it's, it's still very, very limited, especially for the medical quality. I mean, you try and get it on the streets and people are lacing it, they don't know what they're doing, and there's also other drugs available to you. That's where this whole consumption of, it's the gateway drug. It's because we've been forced to get it from other dealers and they just want to make a quick buck, so they shove other things at you. I've never met one person who uses medical marijuana who has used another drug as well after.
Other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Terry Robb, followed by Glenn Christensen. I'm sorry. Counselor Clem, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to ask if I could for clarification. Currently, city council is not considering or is staff bringing to city council anything having to do with medical marijuana? I mean, I know we have a work session.
Not at this moment.
Okay. So, we have no agenda, no authority, and we are not even considering? It's really a county and state thing?
Yeah. Well, we're really just at the beginning of even considering any, any decision at all.
But we have no ordinance or proposed ordinance?
No, we do not.
Okay. Just want to make sure that's clear to all the viewers that, appreciate the comments, but we really are not taking any action on medical marijuana.
Thank you. Yes. Terry Robb?
Uh, my name's Terry Robb, uh, one-one-one-nine-five Janeway Drive, Almsville. Uh, just to make it quick and short, uh, I've been disabled for, going on seventeen years now. For the first seven of those years, I struggled through with morphine overdoses, Percocet, all prescription pills. I have shoeboxes full of prescriptions I've never filled since I've had my medical marijuana card. And I'm asking, is everybody taking it into consideration? There are many people in this town and they're not just this lowly white-collar guy. There's people that are higher up, they're, they're scared to show their voice. And I just want you to make sure that you know that Marion County, you know, they're trying to take our right to our safe medicine. And you take that away, it's going to bring more crime and more, more destruction to this town. So, thank you.
Are there questions for Mr. Robb? All right. Thank you very much. Glenn Christensen, followed by Sarah Duff.
Thank you. Glenn Christensen, thirteen nineteen Elm Street, Salem. Recently, Marion County took a step backwards by instituting a policy to ban, excuse me, medical marijuana dispensaries in unincorporated areas of Marion County. Now, I realize the good gentleman here said that there was no agenda right now, but the seemingly underhanded way that this Marion County Council took on this meeting kind of scared a lot of us. Okay? This decision was due in part to testimony from the Marion County DA and Sheriff that dispensaries would enable kids, our children, to obtain cannabis. Well, we have a very strict policy of checking IDs. You can't get a card unless you're at least eighteen, unless you have very extreme conditions. And as a kid growing up in the sixties, I could get pot anywhere in New York City, but I couldn't get alcohol and tobacco, which was regulated. Let's get our heads out of the sand and work together to ensure those legally entitled to this very real medicine can get it safely and readily. Make no mistake, if you ban safe access points, you will simply transfer those transactions to the black market. Thank you.
Just, I think we have some questions for you. Counselor Dickey?
So, by your testimony, I'm guessing that maybe you operate a medical marijuana facility?
That's correct.
So, um, what I, I'm curious to know is, um, and I don't know if it's inside the city limits of Salem or?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, um, are you aware if you, well, either you or your industry, as other jurisdictions, not Salem, have considered these ordinances? Have they, um, had conversations with you, uh, before enacting these ordinances or is it you just show up at the meeting because you heard it was gonna, uh, go forth?
Yes, the latter.
Other questions or comments? Um, I'd like to add a comment. Um, I happen to sit on the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council and have for about the last ten years. And I would like to indicate to you and to everyone in the audience and, and watching that, um, the, the Public Safety Coordinating Council deliberated very carefully with long, long, long lists and many, many, many pages of, uh, information about the issue. And we drew information from not only the district attorney and the sheriff, but from chiefs of police and from the health department and from other sources. I just want to kind of correct the inference that you made at the beginning of your testimony that the decision was made just based on two people's testimony.
Gotcha.
To that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Hello. My name is Sarah Duff. Um, thank you, Mayor, and people of the city council. I am actually from Portland. I am here on behalf of my patient who lives here in Salem, who I can help on a monthly basis, but in the interim, um, if they need something, they cannot obviously get it very easily from me. Um, I can't make special trips from Portland, so, and we really need places that are open so that people can access their medicine, um, in the meanwhile. And there are also a lot of patients that do not have growers. Um, I've had a couple of other patients here in Salem before they decided to grow for themselves. But it does seem like there's always a long list of people from Salem that do not have, um, safe access right now. I also think that we would be delaying the inevitable if you all choose to, um, not have medical marijuana stores or facilities here in Salem. It does seem like legalization is, um, very much on the horizon and either we make money at the state level, um, on medical marijuana or the drug dealers make money on marijuana. So, I think it's a choice between those two things. And, uh, thank you very much for letting me speak.
Are there questions? Counselor Tesler?
I have a clarification question for you. You probably don't own a dispensary. You're a legal, you're a Green Cross legalized grower for someone in particular. Can you, can you explain that relationship? Because I don't think a lot of people understand how that works.
Definitely. You're correct. I do not own a medical marijuana facility at, at this time. Um, I do not intend to, but I do hope to work in one at some point. Um, so, I've actually worked with, um, other nonprofits, um, just to try to help out whatever I can for patients. I've helped, um, teach people how to grow. I've helped them, um, helped people learn how to process the medicine into other forms. Um, and, um, basically, because I was working at a nonprofit called Oregon Green Free, um, I was encountering a lot of patients that did not have a steady supply of medicine. So, um, I took it upon myself to try to match growers to patients, because I knew a lot of growers that needed patients and patients that needed growers.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who desired to speak during this public comment time that wasn't able to sign up? Yes. Mr. Culbertson? Thank you. Would you come ahead? Oh, and there's another over here? All right. We'll take you next, after Mr. Culbertson. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Sturba. I don't know why I was using the wrong name for you. Welcome, Mr. Sturba.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors, and city staff. And, uh, thank you to public works for plowing the streets in my neighborhood. You guys did a great job. My agenda is the LED lighting in the city program and I have spoke about this in the past. My journey has taken me to contacts to state representative Brian Clem, who has been quite helpful. I've written letters to our US Congressman, uh, in the feeling that energy is being used more as a result of this LED program. My concerns have been about safety and energy savings. And I think if we, we can add to safety in the city is, is to add luminaires to poles that have existing power to them. I'm advocating to put in new poles, but I'm saying let's increase the amount of light fixtures on poles. If you remember in the past, the coin, the Susan B. Anthony coin back in the seventies, it was well-engineered, it was made of fine material, it displayed a artistic design that was really worn. The public's perception of the coin just never rolled out. And so, you've heard and from me and others, um, about the perception of lighting. Engineering stats show there's amount of light that's on the ground. The perception by the public says, "I'm not seeing good." So at this time, I would hope that maybe the city would consider, and I'd like to sit down with open meetings as other cities have done with their neighborhood associations, and pick out a good lighting fixture that fits all parts of the city, our hilly areas and our straight streets and our four-way intersections. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there questions by councilors? All right, thank you very much. This gentleman wanted to testify. Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Jeremy Bruce. My address is 5562 Ross Court, Southeast Salem, Oregon. My professional background is, I received a Bachelor of Science degree in electrical engineering from Portland State, and have worked in the industry for the last 10 years. I recently moved to Oregon from California and have began working as a supplier of medical cannabis here in the state of Oregon. My background related to medical cannabis is, is I've been a grower for the last 10 years. I have studied the dispensary model in California, Colorado, and Washington. I've studied the Initiative 502 in Washington, Amendment 64 in Colorado, and now the HB 3460 in Oregon. Recently, there has been concerns by the police chief and DA that HB 3460 has had a lack of control by local decision-makers and the public safety in that cannabis will be more accessible to our youth, or it'll be more accessible to people other than patients, specifically our youth. Well, there, this is leading towards referencing the gateway drug theory, and you have to really look at more of the root cause of the gateway drug theory. And in that, you could have easily said that the reason that people tend to consume alternative drugs other than cannabis is, is that you, they are, that they are exposed to other drugs through the illicit drug market by drug dealers, essentially the black market. And so implementing a dispensary program will help reduce the black market, thus lowering the exposure to other drugs such as meth and heroin. So the fact that cannabis is illegal is actually and truly the gateway leading to other, other drugs, not cannabis itself. So implementing a dispensary program will also address concerns that cannabis will be accessible to other than patients. Dispensaries themselves only supply patients. Patients are required to show state ID and OMMP ID, and if the patient doesn't have that required documentation, the person is asked to leave the premises.
Thank you. Your time is up. Could you summarize for us, please?
Can I, yes. Actually, yeah, I can. So the medical benefits of cannabis are long, and they've been studied for quite a while now, and the cannabinoids and terpenoids inside the planet itself have very medicinal properties to it.
I'm going to have to ask you to draw your conclusion here.
Okay.
Okay. Because it's unfair to others if you can speak longer than they do.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, well, in closing then, taking the dispensary model and banning it in Salem will essentially push cannabis to the black market, and thus exposing our youth and everyone to more illicit drugs. And I don't think that is the right focus for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there questions, my councilors? All right, thank you so much, appreciate you coming down this evening. All right. That concludes our section for public comment. We have no new business, and I will adjourn this meeting and remind everyone that we have a work session.